This is Steele.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to maybe bring to everyone's attention that during the other budget meetings with the department heads, the mayor talked about giving raises to our department heads once they've met a goal. And I'm gonna maybe reiterate that when it comes to one of them. We're not meeting goals. Raises are being given out. And I too believe that our students never, they deserve a great education. And I understand to do that, it costs money. And every year, we ask our taxpayers to help provide the education by increasing funding to the Board of Education. And let me remind everyone, last year's increase was $900,000 over the years, over that year's spending. And I'm standing my ground this year with what my committee recommended for an increase of $1,250,000. And let me reiterate why and why I feel so strongly about this. And I'm not sure if anybody even remembers, a few years back, there was a 0% increase and everybody made a throw. These are tough economic times for our taxpayers. And during the meeting, there were many various goals that were left open. For example, health care, the health insurance cost. When we sat at the table, bids were not available at the time and/or the decision was not made whether or not to self-insure. I think at this time now, they may have come to a conclusion, but nobody called, nobody said anything. We talked about the amount of teachers and employees that would retire. That information is still not available. But after making some phone calls today, I was brought, it was brought to my attention that in the budget, I think we allowed for 10 or 14, 14, and we're looking at as high as, in the high thirties to possibly as many as 40 retirees, okay? Which may be even more, okay? Of course, the amount of state funding is still unknown. It's not the Board of Education's fault, it's the state's fault. The items in the budget from the previous year were not updated, for example. And this is just a small example, but when we look at our books, when we were sitting in that meeting, and we look at the books and we see line item that show last year, $120,000 was allocated for the purchase of textbooks. When we asked the question, if the books were purchased to Dr. Sal, he shrugged his shoulders indicating that the textbooks were never purchased. And so in the 2013, 2014 line item for textbooks, it's listed 200, an increase, you know, they want $250,000 for textbooks, which is 108% increase over the previous year's spending, but really, it's a much better increase. And are we gonna buy textbooks this year? There's a line item for $250,000. Are we gonna buy textbooks? I don't know. I don't know, because we can't even tell by looking at the information that was given to us at the meeting. Dr. Glass stated that there was a slight improvement in the students' achievement, but keep in mind, last year, only $900,000 of additional funds were appropriated. This year, we'll be adding $1,250,000 to what my committee recommended. Our committee worked very hard, looked over the Board of Education's budget. Some of us did so line item by line item. And my personal opinion was that the Board of Education, our superintendent of schools, came unprepared to give us the answers that we were looking for. And when you're asking for $1,119,164,699, you should be, or I call it over, you should come over prepared. One of the jobs of the city councilperson is to make sure that today's economy, that our taxpayers' hard-earned tax dollars spent wisely. I'm not saying that you don't try. But all of the concerns that were mentioned up here tonight have been mentioned year after year after year, and they never are answered. I don't think it's fair to ask our taxpayers to pay for a budget that was requested on a best guess estimate. As for additional security measures, including staff and fixed costs, we're still waiting for those recommendations from the Joint Security Task Force. And I recommend putting aside the unappropriated funds for use once the task force gives its recommendations. So I continue to support my committee's recommendation, and I also respect the opinion of my fellow council members, and I urge everyone here to vote the way they see fit. Thank you.
Further discussion, Mr. Levy?
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I would like to commend the City Council Educational Committee for their hard work. The taxpayers should know that the committee did their job as the watchdog for the tax dollars that they pay. I attended both the Board of Education workshops and the City Council Educational Budget meetings. Let me start by telling you I strongly support a good educational system. But this is what I observed at both meetings. The majority of questions asked by the Board of Education and the City Council members were poorly, they were poorly answered or the response was, "We don't know." The job of the committee was to review the budget for justification and expenses. That was very difficult, if not impossible, to extract that from the administration. The most, the most used excuse for this was, "We don't know, we know, we don't know how much the state will give us, and our, we don't know what, how to play in our budget." "Our costs have not been finalized by our vendors," was another reason. In my many years of looking at city budgets, every administration has been faced with the same unknowns, but they still managed to present a justifiable budget. At one point, Councilwoman Stanley asked whether the dark rings under her eyes that were caused by late-night reading of the budget was a waste of her time. Councilmen had asked if any of the budget numbers were correct after questioning many line items amounts and getting poor responses. This left the committee with no other choice but to say to the administration, "If you're just guessing at the cost, then let's guess a little lower." I would give the school administration an F for budget presentation and justification. I'm hoping next year, change in the state requirements of Board Education accounting will give a clearer picture on how the taxpayers' money is being spent, because we didn't get it at any of those meetings. Again, I want to thank the committee for doing their conscientious job.
Mr. Levy, further discussion?
This is Dyson. Thank you, Your Honor. I've been struggling with this for the past 24 hours. I have some dark circles to fight. I really went back and forth on this, because I believe the committee did an amazing job. They worked very hard and their questions weren't answered. But I also feel like we don't know what position we're in with the state at this point. I've been watching this process for 10 years. I'll tell you what, it's a chess game. That's, that's what it is. We threatened to take money away, you hit us back with, "Okay, well then, whatever the big thing of the year happens to be, we're gonna cut back." It's a chess game, and I'm concerned about our pawns in all this. I'm getting really concerned. But I loved what Chairwoman Steen said today, I have to say, because in good faith, I'm choosing to believe the Board of Ed. I think they heard us loud and clear. I think changes are gonna come, so I'll be supporting the mayor's proposal tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Hayes?
Thank you, Your Honor. Councilman Wettner said very well, and Councilwoman Stanley nailed it. After the second budget meeting, it kind of felt like a state won. Do all the words and all the arguments back and forth, they heard it. They didn't need to hear it anymore. I knew what everybody was saying. But it seems to me that this meeting that was shared here tonight should have been two weeks ago, maybe, or three weeks ago. The heartfelt thought, emotion, concern, I think that we needed to be gotten out two or three weeks ago, so the things that Councilwoman Stanley addressed so well would have been then readdressed on the Board of Ed. So while I am going to support the mayor's budget, believe me, I want to support Councilwoman Stanley's committee's recommendation. I want it to be really clear, at least for me, that the next budget process, if the specifics that Councilwoman Stanley brought up are not clearly addressed, it's gonna be hard to get a nickel from me. And in saying that, the other thing I'd ask is this. If in fact the subject matter was not addressed, then it seems to hurt a little bit more to give raises to people than the things that were asked to do weren't addressed. So I'm wondering, Your Honor, if I could give this to you, is, is there a way to make an amendment to just remove the raises on that part of it? And that's my only last question, Your Honor. Thank you.
We, thank you, Mr. Hayes, appreciate your comments. We have done that in the past where raises were given. During the next fiscal year, we went back and amended the amount and come back with the approximate value of the raises was. I took a little beating publicly from that. People perceive that as being petty, but I sympathize and empathize with what everybody's saying here. I just save some remarks for later, because I do appreciate the work that Mrs. Stanley's done. And I think in a large part, some, many of her concerns are on point, particularly with something on the common chart of accounts, which we'll have by 2015, which will require the Board to provide the data that Mr. Han Ed wants and what Stanley wants. And I want, which is building by building, what's it costing, how's it costing now? It's a cost allocation model that we should be using, that's a new state law. But for me personally, if I could just take one second, there is no question that there is a bubble in compensation amongst the education establishment. That bubble is, meaning those raises that you're referring to, are unsustainable. There is a bubble in higher ed that is equally as unsustainable, that's driving kids out of college. And I think we all have to come back to earth about what we're paying people and why we're paying them. So I think your point is absolutely spot on. Now, my departments out there are very grumpy about that, because they do see raises given out in the sort of ledger, and they say, "Why can't I have those?" And it's hard for me to tell them, because they are doing more with less. I will say this, I can't say any more than this, because I promised myself I wouldn't say tonight, we're gonna take some of the steps, and hopefully in conjunction with the Board, to address some of the concerns that Mrs. Stanley has raised to me. We want to roll this out in a couple more weeks, and we're gonna invite the entire council to participate in that process. So all is now lost tonight, win or lose, and however this vote goes, this has kicked off a significant amount of conversation as we roll into the next budget cycle. So no question about that. To your point, you could assign a value, an approximate value, what the thing to raise is worth. We're estimating $150,000 in the organization for top tier. I think Mr. Dyson, he's in the union, it's set by union scale, so I don't know if it'd be fair to necessarily cut his, you know, to quantify his, and deduct that from the allocation. Right now, we have one motion on the floor, you could amend this motion. Actually, you could, you could amend, you could amend this motion, deduct an additional $150,000 if you want, or whatever. Again, it's a total guess, I know what we were talking about, you know, it's a total guess. Or you could wait to see how this motion goes, and then offer another amendment, take a conclusion.
I don't understand. Once the money is allocated, we can't tell.
That's correct. You're absolutely correct.
There is no guarantee that we can do, that we can do what they, what we are asking them to do.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. But if you want me to send a message, you can.
Both of us.
And just one more question.
Are you done, Mr. Hayes?
Yes. Thank you.
I just want to reiterate, we've had the same conversation last year, and the year before that, and the year before that, all these same concerns, and we say, "We're gonna get tough, and we're gonna, you know, it's not gonna happen again." And my committee is just trying to maybe show them that we mean business. And I think out of the 10 years I've been on the council, eight years I've been the committee chair for the Board of Ed, I have always, always supported the mayor's proposed number. This is the first year in 10 years that I've seen it not happen. And, you know, I will, I respect my fellow council members and their opinions, and I would like them to vote the way they see fit. I'm not asking, you know, for anything other than that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Seaver?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the first thing that ought to be stated here is this committee that met had all the best intentions for the safety of our children, for the schooling of our children. And we went forward with it to bring light to some of the concerns that we had. I applaud you, if I understood what you just said, Mr. Mayor, saying that down the road...
I promised I wouldn't say it tonight, I just promised myself, but we're gonna roll something out where everybody in this house will be participating. But go ahead.
And I applaud you for that. I think it's necessary to do so. I think it's, it's Councilwoman Stanley just said, "This has been going on year after year of fear." This is only the second time I've been on the Education Committee, and I could have missed a couple of meetings, and the outcome would have sounded the same. So the, the message is out. I believe that we, we knew that it was gonna be enough to build out, make this budget that the committee suggested pass. We're not heartbroken that it probably won't, but there is a message out there to be understood, as Colin just said, and it's not gonna go away. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Seaver, Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Your Honor. Pretty much of a love for me also. I just want to echo my support for Chief Curran and the other people. I think we've sent a very clear message to the Board, and I, by no means, by my comments or my feelings, do I want to take anything away from the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours that people put into this budget and to make the city work. But I also, I'm a firm believer in the democratic process, and I think the work of this committee is that process at work. So if Chief is going to be voting, I'm reluctant, no, I'm gonna be voting, I'm reluctant, yes. Thank you.
Any other discussion, Mr. Otello?
Yeah, I have a point of parliamentary procedure. I believe for a parliamentarian earlier, Les, you said that a vote against the amended ad hoc report that you were suggesting was to be passed, a vote against that means an automatic acceptance of the mayor's original motion. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we will not be voting again tonight for the mayor's budget if, if this fails.
You have one more final vote on the total budget.
No, I understand.
But not in the Education.
Just to set the table, the motion that was made was to concede the education closing report and to adopt this recommendation. In order to, in order to do that, you have to have 14 votes, and to successfully do that, you have to have 14 votes to do so. Once you do that, council is acting in accordance with the charter to amend the mayor's budget. So that recommendation, that, that vote would go forward to the main motion, which Mr. Cabo has made, and then you would vote with the main motion as amending. So if it doesn't carry, if you don't get the 14 yes votes, to make that clear, to amend the mayor's budget, then the motion that Mr. Cabo made is to, is the default option. That is, that the mayor's budget will be adopted by default upon the vote, to the main motion. So in other words, if you have, let's say, 13 yes votes, then the mayor's budget by default is the budget that you voted on. That's clear.
That is clear, but the mayor stated just a moment ago that we couldn't amend...
You could. You can offer.
We would add an education amendment during the general budget vote.
You could, I would entertain amendment after the vote on this motion. You want to offer another amendment relative to the education motion.
The mayor suggests two options, one is you can do it in this particular vote process right now, or you can do it at the main motion.
Excuse me, Mr. [inaudible]. You have an amendment to offer, and you want to wait, you can do that, I'll entertain that.
I just want to, is that up to the discussion with the chair? Because if we vote this down, and the mayor's budget for this particular vote automatically passes, we can't amend something that already passes. We'd have to wait till we do the general.
You read the main motion, but I would entertain it now, just for clarity, because we're on education, it would make more sense.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Levy?
I just want to point out, for those people who may think, one way or another, that we're cutting the budget and we're really attacking the education of our children, that's not the intent here at all. From what I'm hearing, it's the lack of accountability, and it also relates to the performance, achievement levels that are occurring within our systems itself. It's the combined total. More accountability for the money, the better achievement outcomes.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Further discussion? Okay, this will be the third time, or second time for Mr. [inaudible]. It looks like Mr. Otello's saying so. Second time for Mr. Seaver.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to give my thoughts on this as well. You know, I'm looking at the list that Councilwoman Burden has, and according to the rank currently at Gamber, it's 162, the fund of our school systems, have $169,000. So we're not doing a good job of funding our schools. So the $118,000 that's proposed, I'm not against that. What I'm really against is how that might be feeling, the accountability. Councilwoman Stanley, I agree with her. We're not getting the answers that we're, that we're, the questions that we're asking. So I'm gonna ask a question right now, since we're talking about raises. So if the funding is directed at the school, the school board, what are the total raises that we're giving? What's that about?
Current contracted raises, teacher raise is, including step increases and actual general raise increases, approximately 3%. The general wage increase is 1.75 plus the step increases.
If I could, if you ask for the non-contractual raises...
Non-contractual.
Non-contractual raises that are non-humanized are 3%.
Dollar, how much?
Approximately. I didn't, about $100,000.
$100,000. But see, but that's exactly what Councilwoman Stanley was gonna ask. You had almost two months of figures in the top, knowing that we're gonna be asking that question, and you stand in front of us to see, approximating what that dollar is. Instead of giving us an exact dollar figure of what it is, you use the word "approximate", instead of giving us this $100,000. So you're estimating again. So given that, what's the non-contractual, you raise it to 18% increase without the blast, how much that is?
If you have to give me a moment, I have the right in front of me here, but just take a minute. In other words, we don't, those pieces, there's pieces within the budget that are not together. It's not a case of, it's just a teacher salary line, they're in different parts of the actual budget. In other words, you have what are known as a, like a director of different departments, those raises are separate, so it's not just a case of, it's an exact line item.
Correct, you have it.
Thank you. On behalf of you.
Because here was a motion to see if you could withhold $100,000 for those raises. I know we don't have the powers to actually allocate it, but if that motion was made, I would support it.
Mr. Cabo? Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I believe that we all struggle through the budget processes. I believe the Education Committee has pulled the hardest job since the grant agencies were taken out of the budget process and turned over to a different venue for how they were presented out. This has always been a very difficult time for us, and it's worse because of the economy and because there doesn't seem to be any light for the end of that horizon, especially with what's going on in the state legislation. And the proposed governor's budget versus what will eventually turn out from legislature could be very different. While our governor is extremely pro-education, I feel that the legislature struggles with the same things that we struggle with at the legislative body here in St. Gamber, is having to fund that. It's great, I think it's great to be in the position to just throw dollar figures out and say, "This is what I'd like to see happen in education," but the whole reason for the legislative process is to check and balance that, and the state has to do that, and we have to do that here with the mayor and with our Director of Finance. And I just wanted to say, the mayor and the Director of Finance, that you did another tremendous job, as usual, on this year's budget presentation, and thank you for that. I'd like to also take the opportunity to thank all the committee members, chairs, and members who diligently attended meetings and put their time into the process for the outcome this year. What I'm hearing tonight is what I've been hearing for years. I think it's just clear as it's ever been this year from previous years, and that is, we need to have a better line of communication. We need to communicate better. We need to do it as a council, and the Board of Ed needs to do it, and the Board of Education senior staff needs to do a better job in order to help us make the decisions in this process. I know some of it is being legislated, that it's gonna happen in 2015, and I'm happy about some of that process, of waiting to see the final result before I become its cheerleader. My decision to vote no on the proposal that's before us tonight is based on just several financial factors that I've looked at, and that is the Board losing its funding for private school transportation and the resulting effects and requests regarding school safety and security. I see those as costly, and I know the mayor and Director of Finance, along with Board of Ed and senior staff have factored a dollar figure into the budget in order to cover some of those costs. But we don't know what the exact is gonna be. We know right now what the minimum is gonna be with the proposals that have come out of the task force, Mr. Nap Sherdon and members of the Board and members of the union of Sherdon as well, in resulting in increasing the school security. So it's based on those dollar figure issues is why I will be voting no on the proposal. And I'm hoping that as we move forward through this process into next year, that whoever the council is at that time, that the line of communication really can be the issue that's worked out by both the City Council and Board of Ed. that whoever the council is at that time, that the line of communication really can be the issue that's worked on by both the City Council and Board of Ed.
Thank you, Mr. Cabo. I just want to quickly, and I know we need to stop, but I just want to quickly... The notion that we are one hundred and sixty-four out of one hundred and sixty-nine makes us somehow a bad school district is frankly absurd. If we were to measure learning just at how many dollars we throw at students, then what are we doing there? And the fact of the matter is, is that to get better outcomes doesn't necessarily always mean you have to have more money. What it says is that we're very efficient with the money that we have. That's why we're not Waterbury, or New Haven, or Hartford, or other places that rank number one on the list, but the kids have even worse results than what we see in our district. So let's understand that our spending is done wisely and efficiently. That's not a bad thing. And the key number to look at, Mr. Maloney, who has done wonders in this community, a lot of different programs and projects, so I'm not, you know, I'm not arguing, being argumentative. But the key number to look at is not what the percentage of dollars are in terms of will be spent on education. It's what is the percentage of taxpayer money funds, local taxpayer dollars funds education? Because that number has dropped every single year. So what I'd like to see is people in the legislature tell me, why New Britain, who's the eighth largest city in the state, receives seventy-five million dollars for education aid, and Danbury, that is the seventh largest city in the state, receives twenty-three million dollars. We have more students than they do as well. So it doesn't make any sense or rhyme or reason as to why this is done. But really, the real problem here isn't our local taxpayers. It is the legislature's inability to adequately fund our schools, in particular, the every public school district. By the way, it didn't get any better this year. Defense of our local district, it didn't get any better. In fact, they took out the one factor in the ECS formula that helped us. And that was the number of ELL students, English Language Learning Students, in our district as a weight in how much money you get from Hartford. Why did they take that out? Because West Hartford needed more money. So we took it on the chin in our LDCS allocation, so that a much more wealthier community like West Hartford could get more money. That's the problem with funding education in this state. Till we get that rectified, a lot of us are going to be chasing our tails. But I just wanted to point that out, because it is a challenge for each of us. Last thing I'm going to say is, everybody here's raised good points. I appreciate all the work you've done. Mrs. Stanley's done a yeoman's job on this particular project. And I think that, if anything, next year, we'll start in October. Instead of this time. Three months worth of rest. That's all I'm going to do. Because I think everybody's at that point. I appreciate everybody's thought. So at this point, I believe Mr. Cabo wanted to call for a roll call vote. Mr. Cabo, did you want to speak?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, I'm only going to take two minutes. For me, education is one of the best fundamentals that a person should have. But I believe also that we need to have improvements. And United States, the best, the best country in the whole world. And I guess things get too easy, so we don't appreciate what we have. And I hear a lot of numbers here, I hear a lot of technology, but I don't hear no values. And I think that everything starts in the house, and the teachers, to be, to be more pure, to push the kids and really to learn. Now, don't push too much in technology. Teach them in the brain, so this will stay forever. And I think that everybody here understands education is serious, like it's not going to be any cut, but it's the opportunity to prove that you really can do it. If you can prove it, you're not going to have the sort of thing to face into the end. So it's at your hands to prove that you can make the best kids of United States in them. Not just how to turn on one computer, but also to atomize and to do the right numbers, right by the head, in the ways possible. If you do this, you're never going to face this type of problem again. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Cabo. Yeah, I'd like to ask for a roll call vote.
The question would be that when the vote is taken, it can be taken by a roll. At this time, seeing no other...
Can you just remind us the yes, no?
Okay. A yes vote means that you would support cutting the allocation that's been proposed by the mayor's budget. A no vote means that you would not support cutting the act allocation. Is that correct, Mr. Pinter? Is this less clear as I can? Would clerk please call a roll?
Curry.
No.
Cadet.
Yes.
Knapp.
No.
Levy.
Yes.
Seaberry.
Yes.
Stanley.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Kola.
Yes.
Naggerchef.
No.
Cabo.
No.
Visconti.
No.
Colma.
No.
Wetmore.
No.
Nero.
No.
Perkins.
No.
Jeans.
No.
Lotello.
No.
Scott Zapata.
No.
Tysholz.
No.
Thirteen. I have thirteen no's and six yeses. So, right, the report is protected. We go back to the key call number. Did anybody else want to offer any other amendments at this time on education? You can wait for the end. You can do it now, since we're on a roll over education. Ms. Nero.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to make the amendment about moving the salaries, the non-contractual raises. Not the salaries, but the raises. So I'd like to make that.
So your motion would be to reduce the Board of Ed line item by one hundred thousand dollars, which was the number you used.
And if I, if I, would we be able to just expand on that for a second? Would that be acceptable?
Go ahead. Is your motion, go ahead. Well, let's get a second first. Okay. Now you have the floor, Ms. Nero. Please proceed.
The other, the other part of this, and this is why I may be doing this out of order. So I'd almost like to see that stay in, if a year from now, we could look at it and say to the Board of Ed, we're not going to take that out, but we don't want to see it be used for raises. And I know that once we give them the money for this every year, they can do whatever they want with it. But I think in that way, we're saying, we've given you the money. Now show us, show us how you're really going to use that for kids. So that's kind of where I'm, where I'm going on this. If there's a way that we can really track it somehow, then I would say leave it in. Because it only amounts to, I say only, and I'm sure there are people that are going to find this. But if you do some quick math and some quick ratios, for someone, for every hundred thousand dollars that your property is assessed at, this is about a buck. So it's really, when you look at it from saving the taxpayers' money, it's not, it's not... The greater significance in this is how the Board of Ed really uses that money through the years. So my question really is, is if we can track it, I'd like to leave it in, see what the Board of Ed, who does with it. If we can't track it and want to take it out, that's where I am.
We have a motion on the floor to reduce the line item by a hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you. And I'm sticking to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Sheeney, similar.
Thank you. I guess to, for you to be the finance director or to last. I know the motion was to reduce the hundred thousand to using the entire budget, by one hundred thousand. But it says, is there a possibility that we can take that hundred thousand and put it into that reserve account? That we have the technology? Because I don't want to take the hundred thousand dollars.
Well, there's never been a motion before, Rick.
I know. I'll make a motion to amend it. But can we actually take it, put it into an account, that, to that special reserve account, where it's used for education, for future purposes?
Yes.
For the candidates. So, so I'll make a motion, amendment to that motion, that the hundred thou, hundred thousand to be moved from the Board of Education line, to move to that special reserve account. So the budget bottom line is, it's the same.
So, Mr. Nero, do you want to accept it as a friendly amendment, or do you object to that? Because if not, we're going to, we'll stick with your amendment. We'll have to, we'll have to offer that up after you go on, Mr. Nero.
I'll accept that.
Okay. So Mr. Nero will accept that as a friendly amendment. So basically, it's to take the hundred thousand dollars, place it in the technology line item, and the bottom line of the budget, it's the same, right? Okay. And then, the second, so you're going to second that again, Mr. Sheeney?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Mr. Wetmore, you now?
I'll get back to you. Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to clarify. Perhaps I know there was a question. I think there was some mathematics being calculated through to the chair. Do you have the exact figure for the non-contractual raises?
For non-exent raises, including cabinet levels, ninety thousand dollars is the budget. It's approximately, about approximately forty-seven, forty, thirty-nine seven.
If I may, I know it's not, that number is not approximate. That is the concrete number, ninety thousand dollars.
Well, I'll stick with the hundred thousand. Mr. Curry.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Nero, I appreciate what you're trying to do. But I've been on this day long enough to know that no matter what we do with the school board, we're not, we can't tell them how to spend the money. They're going to move money around. They're going to do whatever they want to do with it. But I think we've sent a message that next year, things are going to be a little bit different. But like I said, I appreciate what you're doing, but I'm not voting against what you're trying to do. Thank you.
Mr. Lotello.
I also want to echo a constant occurrence, and I, I indeed appreciate what my colleagues, Councilman Sheeney and Councilman Nero do. That ranking, which I am still not going to mention, the number did escape my attention. And I, when I certainly take the mayor's point, you can have essentially a lower rise in school and excellent education systems, which, by the way, I have to believe that Danbury does have. But the dichotomy there is that if we are actually at that ranking, comparatively low, to sixty thousand dollars, cities in Connecticut, and yet our educational system is exemplary, then it would seem to me that the administration and the board is doing an exemplary job. And if they are, perhaps they deserve these raises. But beyond that, the fact you have the amendment, I mean, just go back and forth in this area for a minute. And that's what we do with the songs tonight. We do not have the statutory authority to dictate through the board what they do with that money. I can't just, you know, micromanage these guys. I mean, I'm not going to take a hundred thousand and put it here just to send a message. I'll send a message in the hall. I'll pick up the phone and talk to the superintendents. Look at them. I don't need to do this with the budget. We've worked too long on this budget to get to this point to do this. And my, believe me, my apologies to the people who come forward to say that. But I think that it's a good sentiment, and I think the practice is not really that possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lotello. Further discussion around the amendment?
We're voting on the amendment.
We're on the amendment.
Peter's amendment.
Yes. Well, no. Peter's eight. Amendment. Right. So I'll rephrase the motion. Does anybody else want to discuss it? No. Okay. So the, what you're voting on is a motion to move a hundred thousand dollars out of the Board of Education general allocation into the technology line item, regardless of single lines. And with that, seeing no other, clerk please call a roll.
Curry.
No.
Cadet.
No.
Knapp.
No.
Levy.
No.
Seaberry.
No.
Stanley.
No.
Taylor.
Yes.
Kola.
No.
Naggerchef.
No.
Cabo.
No.
Visconti.
No.
Colma.
No.
Wetmore.
Yes.
Nero.
Very yes, Mr. Nero. The motion, yeah.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Perkins.
Yes.
Jeans.
Yes.
Lotello.
No.
Scott Zapata.
No.
Scott.
Yeah, no. Tysholz.
No.
Fourteen no's and five yeses. Okay. Any other amendments about the education budget? Seeing none then, we'll now move to the next committee report. There would be the D in your packet. There would be the Public Works budget, and I believe Mr. Curry.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make the motion to receive the Public Works budget report and adopt the recommendations made by the committee.
Westwood David is occurring. Second, by Mr. Visconti. Any discussion under the Public Works portion of the budget report? Seeing none then, I'll try your minds, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries. Now move to item E, Mr. Knapp. There would be health housing, public safety, and social services.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the report of health housing, public services, and public safety and social services. And, and accept the report as presented.
The motion carries. Second, by Mr. Cabo. Any discussion under this particular item? I would like to point out that the best thing the council could do was the United Way allocation process. Very, very successful. Any other discussion? Seeing none then, I'll try your minds, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I believe, from the other half of the committee report, so we're still having the main motion on the floor, as it relates to the adoption of the budget. Any general comments about the budget people want to make before we roll on the main motion? Discussion's open. Seeing none, I'll try your minds. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
The main motion.
On the entire motion.
On the entire motion.
Yes. Anybody want to make any comments? Mr. Cabo.
Just again, Your Honor, I'd like to thank you and David St. Clair and his staff for the enormous amount of work and time and effort that they put in. And so on, and the cares and all the council members for providing their time and efforts. We tend to do the best job we can here every year with the city motion. So thank you all.
Further discussion related to the main motion? Seeing none then, I'll try your minds. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 And all opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
And nays please raise your hand. And Mr. Lotello and Mr. Perkins. Item twenty-eight. I would be remiss in saying one before he goes. Everybody did a terrific job on this. It was one of the best and healthiest discussions I've seen in a while. Very good. So, and I'd also call you the subcommittees. Good work, Your Honor. So thank you. Mr. St. Lambert, thank you for pulling it all in.
Report in ordinance, and ordinance appropriating three million dollars for public improvements in the 2013, 2014 national budget and authorizing to the issuance of three million bonds to the city, of the city to meet set obligations pending the issuance thereof and making temporary borrowings for certain purposes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's a pleasure, counsel. Mr. Knapp.
Thank you, Your Honor. Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to receive the report of the committee of the whole and adopt the ordinance for three million dollars in public improvements and the issuance of three million dollars of funds with the city to meet such obligations and make temporary borrowings for certain purposes. and make temporary warrants for certain purposes.
Second. Question made, seconded by Mr. Taylor. Any discussion under the capital service? Mr. Motello.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll keep the chair at your waffle and hold you on the roll. I keep getting calls on where exactly the Still River money is being dredged. People feel pretty depressed about that.
Uh, the money that's before you is really not set aside for dredging. It is to get to a point where we're going to be dredging. It is a multi-phased project. Starts off honestly, reestablishing the easement along the Still River, which has been severely impacted. A lot of the body private owners have taken upon themselves to actually approach on the easement and have dumped considerable amount of debris into the river. So, uh, it's a multi-phased approach, getting the river to a healthier state. Eventually, the final stage would be segmented removal of debris and sediment. But that will require us to do testing, environmental probing, so on and so forth. And even some environmental studies pertaining to the wildlife that lives in.
Okay. Is there a specific area that you're looking at, like Crossley Street or something?
Well, it's, it's pretty much, there's, there's sediment, packets of sediment throughout the urban area. Some were standing.
Thank you. Further discussion on the capital side. Seeing none then, I'll try your minds, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes, having motion carries. The other city item. Twenty-nine.
Important ordinance, ordinance senior tax free, code of ordinance section eighteen dash twelve. That one, that one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, with your pleasure, counsel. Mr. Seaberry.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to move to receive the report of the council. So hold and adopt the reorganization approval of the Danbury Code of Ordinance, section eighteen dash twelve, point one, point one, establishing the system of tax free for Danbury seniors.
Seconded. Question made, seconded by Councilman Stanley. Any discussion related to this particular issue? Seeing none then, I'll try your minds, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. And second, motion carries, and, and. Madam Clerk, I have thirty minutes.
Report ordinance, becoming incentive, code of ordinance, section eighteen dash seventeen.
Mr. Gasipov, you are recused. Please note that. Okay. With your pleasure, counsel. Councilman Tayshos.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the report and approve the recommendation of the committee and adopt the attached ordinance, section fourteen dash seventeen.
Question made, seconded by Councilman Stanley. Any discussion? The motion's on fire. Mr. Sheeney, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to the, to the, to the, to the. Do you have a number of many employees that have been, that have been, this time?
I think a lot of people are reviewing, um, with their financial advisors. You have a couple of people that have submitted already, but they're still there. They're in the process.
The due date is June thirteen.
But it's June thirteenth, and that's the last day before, uh, that's really the, the date they have to submit everything.
Mr. Sheeney, further discussion? Seeing none then, I'll try your minds, all in favor, please signify. Okay. So, uh, Mrs. Tayshos, uh, it's a resolution and ordinance. You want to adopt a resolution in New York?
Yes, I do.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes, having, uh, Mr. President, we have Department reports, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion that this time we waive the reading of Department of the reports. All members have copies, and the copies have filed a legislative assistance office.
Second. Question made, seconded. We have discussion on Department reports. This is, uh, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is directed to Scott, the life, the health department, to those that do this. Approximately a month ago, I had this tragic mess in my hot water heater. And it was brown water, I don't know what it's called, so I called the health department. And frankly, because I had no idea who else I should call. And I figured I'd get Scott. Scott was out of the office on some kind of a mission. And there was a gentleman by the name of Dan Barudy. I want to take a moment to thank him publicly because, um, it was a water heater for a dummy, one-on-one, and that was the dummy. And he told me how to fix it and, and why he did what he did. And I can play with the pros, but, you know, it's unimportant. He, and he followed up with a second and third phone call. So your, your, your office is doing a great job, so I want to congratulate you. Thanks very much.
Good man.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Sheeney. Further discussion. Mr. Cabo.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to the Chief of Police. Chief.
I. Chief went home yesterday, and I noticed about twelve signs at the intersection of Great Plains and Easttown Road stating that this road will be closed on Saturday, May eleventh. It's a, 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 at eleven a.m., and we need to find alternate passage. And we discussed this before about these triathlons, and I get a lot of complaints from my neighbors and constituents and my word about how do they get around, what do they do? The roads will be passable if I'm not, if they're not.
The ranking permit for them to use certain streets for a period of time. And the state can be, there's already a rule here, the state will allow traffic and the runners or the vipers or the walkers at the same time will do that. But the state can be made a primary consideration. Please also make that special.
You don't foresee that people aren't going to be able to go to work at eleven a.m. or?
The amendment actually starts at seven-thirty in the morning.
Right. I know, I know maybe we're closer to eleven.
I know we received a lot of complaints about it, uh, paths, and so we tried to mitigate those complaints. I'm sure we'll get some complaints. So it'd be interesting what it was using the highway, I think.
I would just appreciate moving forward. Before we issue permits for this, I think we need to make sure that the citizens that live in these areas and neighborhoods, especially the area like Great Plains Road, where there's very limited access, you can only get in and out of it. Great Plains Road is kind of rough. Once you go above, um, Easttown, it becomes very difficult for my constituents. And I, I would appreciate if you go forward and just tell companies, look, we appreciate you wanting to do the race, but they can't shut down the road. They just can't shut down the road. So if we can just watch that going forward, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other discussions under Department reports, Mr. Carroll?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think Chief Carroll has left. But just a thank you shout out to the fire department, who was a house fire in my neighborhood this morning, was over in Stillman. And, um, I was just amazed. I grew up in Danbury. And I remember some fires back when I grew up, it was mostly cat shop and factory fires. But this is, it's been a long time since I saw one like this. I was amazed at the resources that our city can throw at something like this. My heart, of course, first went out to the people that lost property. Thank God, and it's, it's worked with this fire. But the second thing was, uh, the way that they, they contained the fire as quickly as they did and then, and then knocked it down. And I was standing with one of the neighbors right next to that house, and all I could think about was how great it was to have that fire department so that that fire did not spread to any of the population. So, uh, any firefighters out there? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nero. Further discussion on Department reports. Seeing none then, I'll try your minds, on acceptance of the reports, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, and, and. Before we break, I just want to announce that, um, Bishop Visconti is a great, great. Is that right? Congratulations.
He's already bigger than I am. Just clean up. He beat me to it, anyways.
Much better, so I'd thank everybody. I know it's a lot of work. Mr. Ferguson, please let us know when the taxes will go out, so we know when to hide. And, um, but look, there's difficult times, difficult choices to be made. I commend this council on being professional, respectful to each other, and truly caring about the needs of the taxpayers. So great job, and everybody. Mr. Cabo.
Your Honor, um, this time I would like to remove from the table an item from last week's council meeting, which was a resolution for the downtown tax district, and add back to the agenda as item number thirty-two.
That would be something we tabled at the last meeting, council. It was a resolution setting the mill rate as a ministerial act, and we can reach here. Mill rate was set at two point one-six, showing to the request of the downtown special services district. Okay? Good, uh, either resolution. Well, it's already taken from the table, so at this point you can, uh, do it if you don't, or you. A motion made by Mr. Cabo to adopt the mill rate, and the resolution as presented, seconded by Mr. Stewart. Everybody understand, if you remember this? No, just say yes. This is the mill rate that we've downed for City Center and their regulations. Right. We tabled it at the last meeting, so we'll restore it this meeting. If anybody has any questions or discussions about, seeing none then, I'll try your minds, and all favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes, having motion carries, and, and. This Stanley makes a motion to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Knapp. All favor, adjourn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.